Tomás Manglonia, reportando para Mariannas Press. Se espera que comience a las 5:00 p.m. Te estamos trayendo imágenes en la oficina del jefe de Rota. Esperamos mantener este livestream hasta el final del hearing público. Por favor, sigan por ahí. Tomás Manglonia, reportando sobre Rota. Estamos esperando para que comience el hearing público en la oficina del jefe de Rota. Señores y señoras, varios funcionarios militares están aquí para discutir sus planes para proyectos en el aeropuerto de Rota. La pantalla a tu izquierda es una vista live de la sala de conferencia del jefe de Rota. Y la pantalla a tu derecha son los planes propuestos, de los que aprenderemos más esta noche. Así que te dejaremos con esta imagen en vivo y luego lo cancelaremos una vez que comience el programa oficial. Gracias por estar al tanto de Mariannas Press. Tomás Manglonia, reportando sobre Rota. Estamos esperando para que comience el hearing público en la oficina del jefe de Rota. Estamos transmitiendo en vivo en Rota. Esperamos escuchar sobre los planes propuestos para proyectos militares en el aeropuerto de Rota. Así que tenemos a varios funcionarios militares aquí y puedes ver que el jefe de Rota ha llegado. Así que creo que podemos esperar que comience en algún momento ahora, pero esperaremos que comience el programa oficial. Por ahora, te dejaremos con estas imágenes en vivo de la oficina del jefe de Rota.
Test, test, micrófono. Bien, buenas tardes a todos. En nombre del jefe de Rota, gracias a ustedes por venir a la sala de conferencia del jefe de Rota para este "Puntapié Militar en Rota", un hearing público realizado aquí en la sala de conferencia del jefe de Rota. Para el placer del público, permítanme reconocier a los ciudadanos en la sala para que estemos mejor acostumbrados unos a otros durante el continuo hearing público. Para los líderes municipales, tenemos con nosotros, por supuesto, al admiral de Rota, el honorable Aubrey Amhokut, junto con miembros de la Junta Municipal de Rota, 20ª Junta Municipal, tenemos a la señora de la Junta, Tilly Tamnial, y el jefe de la Junta, Jonathan Lizama. También nos acompañan nuestros miembros de la delegación legislativa de Rota. Tenemos al senador Donald Manglonia con nosotros, el senador Dennis Mendiol, presidente del Senado de la CNIMI, y el senador Ronnie Calvo. También nos acompaña la señora de la Conexión, Julie Ogul, y tenemos a la representante del jefe de gobierno, la señora Agnes Titanel, así como al gerente de portales para el CPA Rota, el señor Albert Titanel. Y luego tenemos a nuestros miembros del cabal de jefe de Rota, la señora RD Kaisaken de Comercio, así como la RD de trabajo, el señor Harry Mozga, ahí atrás. El jefe de personal, el señor Dean Reynolds Manglonia está con nosotros. También, un agradecimiento especial a nuestros hombres y mujeres visitantes, a nuestros miembros de servicio, quiero que me acompañen mientras los invito y su counterparta civil. El señor Randy Sablon, Sr. Asesor de Asuntos Políticos y Militares de la Junta Regional de Rota, es con nosotros. Un gran agradecimiento al comandante ECG del 356, el coronel Pete Ju, el coronel Tony Fontaneta, del detachment 1, jefe de PAC-7, el coronel Lieutenant John Richwine, del 356, deputy comandante de ECG, el coronel Lieutenant Frank Gloss, Gwam Liazo, el primer lieutenant Ryan McGrodrick, PAC-CAF, detachment 1, ingeniero civil, el jefe de Sargento de Mestra Dwight McQ, del 365, líder senior, el sr. Sargento de Mestra Josh Emmeraga, detachment 1, líder senior. Tenemos nuestro propio retiro de la ejército de Estados Unidos, el coronel Edward C. Camacho, el sr. S.A. para el Bureau de Asuntos Militares del Bureau de Gobierno. También tenemos al sr. Sargento de Mestra Clint Cruz, del 513, EPPF. Y también nos acompañan en línea con la información pública de Rota nuestros espectadores y nuestros miembros de la comunidad. Para dar las palabras de voz, permítanme llamar al jefe de Rota, el honorable Aubrey Amhokut.
Gracias, señor Mayor. Y a todos aquellos que mencionó, gracias por acompañarnos. A nuestros residentes, nuestra comunidad de Luta aquí y en línea, gracias por estar al tanto y estar presentes. Sabes, todos amamos nuestra isla de Luta. Sabes, y así definitivamente queremos ser capaces de escuchar y expresar cualquier preocupación o preguntas que nuestra comunidad tiene en relación con cualquier participación o cualquier construcción aquí en la isla. Así que, por favor, encargo a nuestros miembros de la comunidad, para aquellos de ustedes en Rota, si están aquí en la isla y quieren parar, por favor, hagan su camino, o pueden ver en línea. Y por favor, utilicen este como el outlet más apropiado para expresar sus preguntas o preocupaciones. Y así, con eso, empecemos. Gracias.
Bien, nuestra siguiente parte será la presentación del representante militar de Estados Unidos, y le haré que explique más.
Tomás Manglonia, buenas noches. Una bienvenida calida desde el admiral general Huffman y también el admiral general Devois de la junta de fuerzas comunes Micronesia y la Junta Regional Mariannas en Guam. Están emocionados por lo que viene en el futuro con los proyectos de la Fuerza Aérea y esperan que esta reunión sea productiva e informativa y sea solo un primer paso a un número de pasos mientras nos unimos con la Fuerza Aérea y escuchamos sus planes y estar como con ellos, cuello a cuello, mientras ejecutan su construcción hacia un éxito exitoso. Sabes, ha pasado mucho tiempo. Vuelvo a un par de administraciones donde se han hecho solicitudes de inversión militar en Rota y realmente no hubo ninguna durante muchos, muchos años. Por supuesto, todos están familiarizados con los ejercicios anuales como Cope Norte, cosas así. Así que esa es una presencia que entra en la comunidad una o dos veces al año. Pero eso es muy diferente de lo que va a pasar con la construcción, aunque esta construcción, como se describirá por el coronel Fontaneta, va a ser algo que apoya las operaciones futuras, ya sea en la formación o asistencia humanitaria después de un typhoon o cualquier otro tipo de crisis que pueda llegar a nuestras costas en nuestra área. Así que trabajan mano a mano. Así que es muy emocionante tener este proyecto de construcción que viene. Y sabes, creo que los ingenieros medirán su éxito de misión de varias maneras. ¿Recibió completo según los planes? ¿Fue realizado seguramente? ¿Fue realizado en tiempo? ¿Recibieron todo? ¿Encontraron todos los marcos con su construcción para que la infraestructura sea completa? Y eso es bueno, esa es la forma en que piensan y cómo miden el éxito. Pero sé que después de hablar con el coronel y los otros miembros militares aquí de la Fuerza Aérea, sé que también están interesados en esta comunidad. Y así, otra medida de éxito es cuando llegamos al final, ¿puedemos mirar atrás en el tiempo que hemos pasado juntos construyendo alguna infraestructura, involucrando lo que a menudo llamamos comunidad de hostias? En este caso, la comunidad de Rota. ¿Pasó bien con la gente? ¿Estaban apoyados los miembros militares y apoyaron a la comunidad? Porque es una relación al final del día. Así que es nuestra esperanza en la Junta Regional y la Junta de Fuerzas Comunes que mientras la Fuerza Aérea llega adelante y hace el trabajo hecho, que cuando dicen "misión completa", eso también significa que han construido relaciones, conocen a la gente en esta comunidad, estuvieron apoyados, y tal vez algunas amistades de vida se han desarrollado a lo largo del camino. Eso sería fantástico. Y eso no sería solo "misión completa", eso sería una excelente misión ejecutada. Así que podemos esperar a eso y si todos ponemos nuestras cuellos a ello, creo que tendremos una misión exitosa aquí en el futuro próximo. Así que a el jefe Amhokut y al presidente del Senado, Mendiol, el senador Manglonia y otros miembros de la dirección de Rota y de la dirección de la CNIMI, incluyendo la Junta Municipal, miembros de varias head们 que están aquí. Espero que se involucre cuando la presentación esté aquí y haga preguntas, porque queremos saber cómo vamos a trabajar juntos para hacer que esto sea un buen proyecto. Así que muchas gracias. No voy a decir mucho más y lo pondremos casi a la tropilla aquí. Muchas gracias, Seju Masie.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es el coronel Tony Fontaneta. Muchas gracias por la oportunidad de venir aquí y hablar esta noche. Antes de entrar en el proyecto, quería introducir a nuestro equipo y a los miembros que están aquí y un poco sobre por qué estamos aquí. La Fuerza Aérea ha estado tratando de conseguir una forma rápida de involucrar proyectos durante un número de años ahora. Y tradicionalmente, lo que hemos hecho es ejecutar a través de contratos. Y toman un gran número de tiempo y el tiempo no es algo que tenemos como recurso en este momento. Así que lo que hemos hecho en PAC-CAF es establecer este sistema, que es inherente a los ciudadanos en uniforme. Podemos hacer diseño, construcción, programación, medioambiental y ejecución con nuestros ciudadanos en uniforme. Y estoy un poco humilde de estar aquí con ustedes esta noche, con los hijos y hijas de Luta en la pared allí. Realmente pone las cosas en perspectiva. Y tener a los ciudadanos aquí estableciendo esas relaciones, al punto de Sablon, es algo que realmente tomamos en serio. Voy a tener un momento muy difícil de sacar el senior MRI de la isla. Sé que muchos de ustedes han tenido la oportunidad de conocerlo aquí. Tal vez necesiten volver a Denver en algún momento. Por favor. Así que, ¿cómo conseguimos hacer esta construcción? De una manera innovadora. Usamos trabajo de tropas para llegar a nuestra completación del proyecto. Así que, ¿de dónde empezamos? ¿Cuáles son algunos de los proyectos inmediatos que podemos hacer en conjunto con el aeropuerto para apoyar nuestra defensa común? Así que les animo esta noche a ver los visuales que tenemos aquí. Están publicados alrededor de la sala para que todos puedan tener una comprensión clara de lo que estamos buscando conseguir. Así que muy simple, el primer proyecto que estamos buscando hacer en el campo de vuelo son los pases con cemento en apoyo de nuestro sistema de arrestamiento de aviones móviles. El sistema de arrestamiento de aviones móviles se utiliza para un avión en una emergencia de incendio. Son piezas bastante grandes de equipamiento que están en ambos lados de la autopista y hay un cable que pasa por encima. Ese cable se usa para pegar un aterrizaje en el avión, como vemos en los cargamentos. La Fuerza Aérea solo lo usa cuando hay una emergencia y el avión está en desestancamiento. ¿Por qué es importante tener esos pases con cemento ahí fuera? Los pases con cemento nos permiten depilar ese equipamiento a una tasa de 50% más rápido que si fuéramos a salir, tratar de instalarlos sin los pases con cemento ahí y usar ankers. El otro punto importante de ahí es que queremos asegurar que todo el trabajo que hacemos en el aeropuerto es permanente y funcional. No queremos causar ningún desestancamiento en la infraestructura que está fuera. Y realmente nos gustaría ser un socio cooperativo en ese compromiso. Así que es difícil de ver porque son tan pequeños, pero lo que tenemos son ocho pases, dos en el norte, dos en el sur, dos en el norte, dos en el sur. Y los pases con cemento están ahí para anclar el equipamiento mientras está fuera. Ese equipamiento no está fuera en una base permanente, se usa en una base necesaria para arrestar los aviones en desestancamiento. Lo que hemos hecho aquí es usado un poco de Photoshop, ¿verdad? Así que tenemos una imagen que está aquí, que en realidad fue tomada de la línea central de la autopista en Rota y muestra cómo se vería esa perspectiva si esos pases con cemento fueran reemplazados. También tenemos una vista aérea de la imposición de cemento en otro campo de vuelo aquí en la CNIMI. El otro aspecto de nuestro proyecto que estamos buscando ejecutar son nuestras tiendas. Así que tenemos seis tiendas que son 5,000 metros cuadrados por pie y los llamamos casings. Esos casings están en pases con cemento con una pared de semilla con cemento y se usa de acero corrigido. Las tiendas se usan para almacenar material para la recuperación del campo de vuelo. Así que tendremos equipamiento ahí, material y generadores y algunos equipos de control almacenados en esas tiendas. Algunas de las intenciones detrás del planificación que entró en estos proyectos fue suplantar nuestra relación civil en el aeropuerto. Así que en la parte del frente de nuestra mente fue asegurar que hubiera un desconflicción con cualquier plan que el CPA tuviera para la expansión futura. También hemos intentado desconfiliar nuestra estructura de área para asegurar que no haya una presencia excesiva en el aeropuerto. Entendemos que el turismo es sangre de vida para los ciudadanos de Rota y queremos asegurarnos de que estemos tan inambiguos como sea posible. Me gustaría solicitar preguntas y parar por un segundo, si eso está bien. Y si hay preguntas específicas del proyecto, me encantaría divertirlos. Sí, señor.
Durante el proyecto, ¿cuándo planeas hacer el groundbreaking, en cuanto a los pies en el terreno?
Tú eres un hombre después de mi corazón. ¿Cuándo vamos a hacer el groundbreaking, verdad? Absolutamente. Bien, así que actualmente, nuestro plan propuesto está con el CPA y nuestra comprensión es que será revisado y votado en mediño de mayo.
De este año.
De este año. Poniendo esto, buscaremos un apoyo de CPA y luego trabajaremos hacia un acuerdo de alquiler para el empleo. Lo que nos gustaría ver es una línea de tiempo propuesta, posiblemente comenzar en el otoño. Y ese inicio miraría a unos 20 a 40 ciudadanos en uniforme aquí en Rota durante un periodo de alrededor de nueve meses para lograr eso. Por supuesto.
Después del groundbreaking, ¿cuándo estás mirando la completación? ¿Cómo largo tardará?
Así que la duración sería de alrededor de nueve meses. Sí, señor.
Si me he equivocado, mencionaste que la construcción será principalmente realizada por hombres en uniforme. ¿Hay una posibilidad de extender el empleo a nuestros pueblos locales aquí? Como sabes, nuestra economía de la CNIMI no está haciendo tan bien. Y sé lo que se entiende cuando dices que los proyectos serán principalmente construidos por hombres en uniforme, pero estoy involucrado en la cuestión para el futuro de nuestra gente que necesita empleo. ¿Hubiera una oportunidad?
Así que en el contexto de la construcción directa, sería trabajo de tropas. Pero nuestra intención es asegurar que nuestra interacción con la economía local sea absolutamente maximizada, en la medida en que la economía local quiere ser involucrada. Así que algunas de las cosas que hemos hablado y Josh ha trabajado aquí en la isla son alojamiento, comida y... is lodging, food, and all the support elements as far as material work that could be procured here from the island vice somewhere else. So, part of what our engagement here is and why we're starting with a humble beginning is to make sure that we can show proof of concept with this way of conducting business. And what's absolutely critical to us, Mr. Sablon touched on it earlier, is developing those relationships and making sure that we are engaging at the right level and that we are supporting the local economy to the maximum extent possible.
Thank you. And if I may ask, the six warehouse storage, where is that exactly going to be constructed?
Yes, ma'am. So, this is the terminal and this is the existing ramp. And the warehouses are in this area here.
So, it's very visible for our tourists as well as the community?
So, one of the things that we were in discussions with CPA was using the existing foliage there as a shield around those areas, a visible shield for those facilities.
Like I said in the beginning, my main purpose here is to ensure for the safety of the future generation, the younger people, the CNMI. As far as me, I am happily at my age of retirement. And I don't foresee a whole lot of years. But for my purpose of asking the question in regards to safety, since you're building somewhat a huge storage or, you know, for your supplies, equipments, we don't know what's going to come as far as our safety until it pretty much hits us. So, I only pray that with your presence here in Rota, that God willing, we all be safe.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Please, any questions? Yes, sir.
If you're saying the project is going to roughly be around nine months, something like that?
The project finish will be roughly within nine months. You're saying roughly you're going to have about 40 to 50 personnels here on?
Between 20 to 40.
Or 20 to 40. After the project's complete, are you going to have anybody stationed here? Are you going to have like anybody that's going to be here to maintain like the area there?
That's a great question, sir. So, one of the things that we'll work out with CPA as part of the lease agreement are maintaining of the lease grounds. So, the intention is not to have permanent party personnel here. It's a standalone. So, maintenance would be in conjunction with CPA and the airports existing.
Other questions online?
Oh, great question.
I apologize again. If anyone in the community is comfortable in asking your question tomorrow, we do have an onsite translator. I'd like to thank former Councilman Richard Manglona again for assisting. If anyone wants to ask your question tomorrow, there's a translator.
If there's any questions online?
Okay, we have some questions online. I'm going to go ahead and read them out. Okay, this one question came in about a minute ago. It says, it was mentioned that this is the first step of many more steps, but given the development, plans are already being shared today. It is clear planning has been underway well before this hearing. Can you clearly outline how the Luta community has been engaged in the planning process to date and what roles the community will play in shaping decision moving forward?
Great, thank you for the question. So, our proposal was done in conjunction with planning with CPA. We've had some conversations with BECQ already. With the overall takeaway being that we are using our CNMI buses and partners to make sure that this is a comprehensive effort, that engagement is through our local channels, and that when we share this, we share it as early as we possibly can. So, the proposal as is outlined this evening was shared with the CPA at the end of March. As a matter of fact, the board has not yet seen it. So, we're pending that vote. So, our goal is to be as transparent and solicit as much information on the front end as possible so that we all have something that we can be proud of over.
Yes. You mentioned that some of the functions after the project is completed will be transferred over to CPA, is that right?
For maintenance of the grounds, sir, yes.
Just ground maintenance?
Yes, sir.
Not building maintenance?
No, sir, not building maintenance.
Is there any plan to farm out some of the maintenance work?
That's a great question, sir. And I don't know that we've gotten as far down that path as we might should be.
Thank you.
But what I'm hearing is opportunity, right? So, thank you for that.
We have one online, one more online. Just going to go ahead and read it from here. It's, the question goes, if I heard correctly from someone in the audience, the question was directly about labor and the construction, not hotel, restaurant, etc., can that be directly answered? Again, I'm going to read the statement. If I heard correctly from someone in the audience, the question was directly about labor and the construction, not hotel/restaurant/ETC, etc., can that be directly answered?
I will answer it as directly as I know how. So, the labor for construction will be uniform service members via troop labor. Please.
I noticed there's a lot of improvements that are planned and expansion, but I'm curious about the end product. Like, will we be able to utilize the airport as a facility that can accommodate regular direct flights to Rota?
Thank you for teeing that up. And Albert and I were talking about this earlier. I'm sorry, I can't hear my own voice right now. Is that good? Thank you. So, what we're doing right now is, in Tony Fontanetta's opinion, our humble start. So, we have not done this yet. This is the first opportunity that we have within the CNMI to be on the International Airport with troop labor being able to execute expediently. We're not waiting two or three years to get this done. What we're trying to do is get it done now. My hope is that if we can execute quickly via this methodology, that it will open the door for us to be able to expand opportunities for joint use of the space. If it is better for the US Air Force to use the airfield, it is my hope and dream for it to be better for everybody that is sitting in this room. It's a shared goal. It can't be better for one and not the other. Those improvements better everybody's opportunity out there at the airport. Stronger infrastructure makes everybody better.
So, what you're saying is this is the first step in a bigger plan?
No, not in a bigger plan. It's our opportunity to show that we can get work accomplished in this manner. If we can get work accomplished in this manner, then I can foresee an opportunity for us to pursue other improvements at the CNMI airports.
Okay, thank you.
One last question. You said that the term of the construction is nine months. During that nine-month period, would the men in uniform be conducting and assisting community services? Improvement, you know, smaller?
So, their focus would be on the construction project, sir. But I'll share with you that our comrades in the Expediatory Civil Engineering Group have done some awesome things on their own time over at Tinian. And here's me signing Colonel Jew up for some stuff. They've made such strong relationships at Tinian that they're out there on weekends taking part in their local festivals, painting the boxes. It's been a wonderfully coordinated effort out there. So, the direct answer to your question is that their focus is on that construction through troop labor. But we find that it's very difficult to keep our folks in uniform out of active engagement with the local community.
And would the construction material be coming in by air or by ship port? The reason why I ask that because, you know, it's about a nine-mile travel time from our port and our roads are in their need of repairs. That's something that we're looking for. Maybe with the help of the military, we can expedite or move that forward to get the roads done or repaired.
Yeah, thank you. That's not within our current scope. And quite frankly, we've not gotten to the point where we're talking about logistics for material yet. We want to make sure that we've got the plan that CPA has reviewed on the table. We're soliciting comments back from the community in a forum like this. We're not that far down the trail yet, sir.
But you have an idea, right? How much construction material would base on your plans?
Yes, sir. I don't yet have a bill of material, if that's what you're asking. And that is what you're asking.
Our next question, if there's not pushing from the audience, we do have collaborating with today's event from Marianas Press. Mr. Tomas Manglona, he has a question on his platform.
I can just shout mine out. This question comes from a viewer. If not classified, can you share what is going to be stored in the warehouse? For example, high explosive materials or weapons?
Absolutely. All of these projects are for recovery operations. The MOSPads support aircraft recovery. The equipment and the material that are in the warehouses support airfield recovery. So, in that warehouse are material for repair of the runway, equipment for repair of the runway, communications gear, and generators. There are no munitions that are a part of this process and there is no intention to store munitions at the airfield.
And then, the second question from a Rota viewer. Are there any environmental and cultural assessments in regards to this proposal?
Awesome. Thank you for teeing that up for me. So, the Air Force's process is the National Environmental Protection Act. There is no reason why we're not using NEPA in CNMI. Of course, we use NEPA in CNMI. So, we will go through the NEPA process straight through. I'm really excited about this one because we've gotten the opportunity to kind of smoke it over with BECQ here recently. So, we've provided a draft of our intention to them. So, we look forward to teaming with them and working through that process. So, there will be a Section 7 review and a Section 106 review. We will follow the NEPA process straight through.
That's all from?
Yes, sir.
Good afternoon, sir. I'm just, I'm curious of your plan. Would you let us know how long is this plan? As you mentioned, you said it's going through the Congress. Is that true?
No, sir.
Or getting approval from the Congress or what?
No, sir. So, the draft proposal has been provided to the CPA as of the end of March.
So, who's making the final decision to proceed with the project?
So, our next steps would be the board vote. And Al, please correct me if I'm speaking at a church. They would vote on the proposal and it would be amenable to them. And as we move forward with that, we would seek an appraisal and then a lease agreement with the airport.
Colonel, could you just identify CPA's Commonwealth Ports Authority?
Oh, I'm sorry. The Commonwealth Ports Authority. Thank you.
Okay, last question. How long you think the project will come to fruition? I mean, is it going to take 10 years from now or two years from now?
Right, sir. Our goal, what we'd like to see is a start in the fall. Just being realistic about the processes that we want to work through and make sure that our plan is sound and solid. With a start in the fall, we would have a nine-month execution window for these two projects.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah, I have two more questions that just came in. First one is, there was an executive order to loosen NEPA restrictions. How would those safeguards be guaranteed if the executive order passes?
I, quite frankly, cannot speak to that executive order and how it relates to our current NEPA process. Our intention is to follow the NEPA process that we've had success with in the past, which is our standard. How that new executive order affects the NEPA process, I can't speak to.
And then, a follow-up to the previous question. Is the analysis of environmental and cultural impacts being overlooked or fast-tracked for this plan?
No, our intention is to follow the NEPA process. Please, yes, sir.
For as far as like what you're doing with the upgrades of the warehouse or whatnot, will there be any benefit as far as with the airport itself? As far as like any improvements within the airport that can follow up with it?
So, one of the things that we were looking at is getting out on the ramp and possibly doing some fire removal, joint clearance, and then sealing. As a function of the effort.
Could we ask Mr. Howard just to share maybe the FAA plans just so the people are aware that there's no overlap or conflict?
Thank you, ma'am. So, currently, they are first submitted a proposal to the Board of Directors and they have not included that in their agenda for the next board meeting. I'm pushing the, or asking our board members from Rota to try and include that in their next board meeting agenda so that they can look at the proposal and hopefully come with a decision in regards to the proposal. Now, in regards to the MOSPads, that's also going to have to go to FAA for approval because it's on the runway. FAA handles all approval for the runway. And Colonel, in regards to your question yesterday as to the timeframe of the approval from FAA, I spoke to them today and there's no definite timeline as to when they're going to approve it. It's just a matter of them approving it and then we've got to keep following up on their approval. So, that's the answer to that question.
Great, thank you. And our intention is to be able to provide a design that meets the FAA recommendations for standoff. And so, our hope is that that review process is expedited by a design that's thoughtful and affordable.
Right, right.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. I wanted to clarify mainly that the proposed project is a direct benefit for the Air Force. Do you have, you don't have to answer this right away. Is there anything besides the ones earlier you mentioned about hotels and food service and whatever? Is there any direct benefit for the community? I know that in a time of disaster here and there, but is there anything that is in your plan to directly benefit the community of Rota? You don't have to answer it right now. But I appreciate if you will give that info to the mayor as to what benefits the community can expect from Air Force. Thank you.
Sure. Howard, did you want to?
Yeah, if I may answer that. So, one of the things that CPA is asking the Air Force, the military in regards to this proposal is that not only six warehouses that you're planning to build, but CPA is asking for an extra warehouse for CPA to use so that if in case there is a disaster in Rota, FEMA can also use that warehouse to bring in goods for the community of Rota should the need be there for in the future. So, that's one of the direct impact of this project in regards to this new proposal. That is one of the... That is one of the things that CPA is requesting and is gonna be continued to request to have that for that. So that other federal agencies like FEMA, in case there's a typhoon disaster in ROTA, FEMA can also use that warehouse. So that is the reason that we were, we were asking for that. Thank you.
Very good, thank you. And we spoke about that yesterday. That's something that we'll have to advance as a separate function of the project. But I would offer to you offhand, collective defense is what our, our benefit is here. But directly to your point, the, the intent of the projects is to get after what is most critical for us and in time-sensitive. These are assets that if we need them, we need them there now. And we don't have the time to be able to bring up that equipment in or stage it in any other way. And bringing things on and off the island is, is not ideal for anybody. We don't want to introduce any type of biohazard. If we can stage the equipment here, it, it's ideal. So I can get a get-back to you, ma'am. I hope that partially answered the question. But in, in a sentence, our collective defense is what we're sharing. Yes, sir.
If after this project is over and you guys are doing like military exercises with Guam or wherever, would you be utilizing ROTA as far as part of the military exercise and would that be part of the plan?
So th- these projects do not affect our current cadence or schedule for exercises, so it would be status quo.
No, like if, if it was already finished, would you guys implement to involve ROTA in it?
This, this would not affect our current exercise.
It wouldn't add on to it or nothing?
No, sir.
Colonel, I think he's asking whether ROTA can include it in exercises?
Yes.
As a function of the projects, we, we would have to stay within the constraints of our existing environmental impact statements, which is kind of our limiting factor for exercises. Ma'am, you can ask as many questions as you want.
How did you come about deciding on this project to be in ROTA and not Saipan and not Tinian? Can, can you just give us a street history of why was ROTA a place that you decided?
That's a great question. And I, I probably have to think about that because I'm picking the stick up here with about three weeks on the job. I would offer to you that it's an opportunity for us to engage early and bring immediate benefit to our program and our plan. It was, it was a target of opportunity, to be honest with you. We saw that ROTA would be a willing partner in, in our efforts. We've been embraced by the local community. The relationships that have been established with all of our three and four letters in CNMI are phenomenal. So ROTA just seemed to be a natural iteration. I can't tell you that there was any programmed plan to say ROTA was first. We started thinking about designs and needs at these independent airfields and we thought that collectively this was an opportunity for us to prove the concept that, that we can do this with true labor, true design, and true construction.
Colonel, may I just?
Yep.
So you know, you know, part of this, we'd like really give credit to our governor. You know, when we partake in our stakeholders' meeting with CPA, you know, there's many focus on Tinian. And of course, Saipan is the center. And seeing how can ROTA be included, especially going through that period of time. And so there was an ask by God to see if ROTA could be utilized as a storage area. And I think that's what, that, you know, that idea prompted, you know, the military to consider ROTA as a possible storage. And then, yes, that was what prompted. So I do want to give credit and thank our governor.
Thank you for sharing. Yes, sir.
Earlier you mentioned proof of concept. So, once you've established, you know, proof of concept, are you able to share or what may be future plans that may come from this? Seeing as how it may be, you know, you hit all the marks in terms of how quickly you get all of this done. Are there any, well, first off, before that, how, how long are you planning to lease the property of, of the airport?
I, I don't, I don't have that answer. We've not gotten that far, to be, to be frank.
But when, but when you and CPA get to the table and discusses what would see next phase or next plan that maybe the Air Force or other branches might add on to what you're trying to establish here in terms of proof of concept?
I, I think I understand what you mean. So when I say proof of concept, it's our ability to execute projects in this manner in an expedient way. Under normal circumstances, using military construction appropriation, we're looking at a two-to-four-year timeline between programming, funding, and being able to execute. What we're trying to do is shorten that lead. And if we can do it with, excuse me, with a fully uniformed forces, we feel like we can get after it a lot quicker. If we prove that concept here and we're successful and everybody is happy with the output and we're able to get it done as quickly as possible, I think it's going to open people's eyes as to what is in the realm of possible, right? And that we can look for some opportunities for win-win scenarios at the airfields. To directly answer your question, I don't have any plans past what it is we're looking at right here. But my hope is that we're able to execute expeditiously that people are gonna have a lot more ideas about what can be done for the benefit of both the airport and the Air Force in collective defense.
Thank you. Mr. Tyson, is that something that you're familiar with in terms of how many years they're, they're looking at? Do you see?
So throughout the conversation in regards to this proposal and the proposal that I've heard from the Air Force prior to Colonel Fontenelle coming over here, was it's for long-term? I don't know what long-term or how many years is that long-term proposal. It's for the Air Force, but it's for long-term lease of that property.
So just, just based on experience, what, what have we done before? So the divert field in Tinian, just before that lease was struck with CPA, between CPA and, and Department of Defense on behalf of the Air Force, there was a change in public law, in CNMI public law because the, the number of years for a government lease was, I think, 20 years with an extension of 10, something like that. That was the construct. And then, I guess fortuitously in time, the CNMI government saw that they could increase the length of leases and so they did. And I believe it went up to 40 years. So with maybe an extension of another five or something like that. So I, I can't, you know, don't quote me on the exact number of years, but it, I think it's in the neighborhood of about 40 years. That, that would be the definition of long-term under CNMI law. It is CNMI law that guides the number of years that can be offered in, in a, you know, to strike a, to strike a lease deal. We, I, I believe the Department of Defense would fall within those, those parameters. Because we've done it before. We've done that one time before at divert.
Thank you. When you say that, you know, these are plans and you're setting them in place, it's all fine. We're all in this together. Because, you know, we know the situation in the, in the world at this time. So, of course, I support the military presence. I have two kids in the military, so. But the issue here is that for, for like a long-term, we want to see like a, a plan with the military in alignment with the community. So the community needs a good working airport that can, what do you call this? Accommodate direct flights so we can improve our tourism. But at the same time, we also need the military to look at this plan as maybe an R and R place in ROTA. Because we see ROTA is so beautiful. We see the mayor's working so hard to keep it that way and to improve it. And we don't want to turn it into a military installation. Of course, that's fine, but we want the community, I think here is more trying to see what benefit they can have with this addition of improvement to our infrastructure. But of course, we appreciate this. But if we could join in the partners in becoming, changing ROTA to, or making it, making it remain as a paradise and not a place where, you know, it's just used for strictly military purposes. Thank you.
Understood. Thank you. So I'm, I'm noticing a handful of questions from, from the community that are visionary. You're, you're asking questions about the future. I will, I will say this. So this fine gentleman and, and his construction engineers are going to do that project. And that's what he knows. So from the joint region standpoint, I would just offer a little bit of a reminder some of the terms I'm gonna use may be familiar to you, maybe they're not. When they build that project, I have no doubt, in all the experience I've had with the Department of Defense, improvements in capability get military people thinking about future uses, right? Like how can we use it? I mean, it's nice to have it there. It's in a warehouse. It's well taken care of in case of an emergency. It's all there. That's, that's, that's the benefit of the project to the Department of Defense. However, we, the military trains all the time. Every year, multiple times, we have major exercises in the region and we have minor, small unit exercises. Somebody, I have no doubt, in DOD is gonna look at every airport in Micronesia, right? So ROTA, Tinian, Saipan, of course, they use Guam, they have their own air, we have our own Air Force base there. But the military is looking at Yap, Palau, and other airfields. And some improvements are being made on some of those seaports and airports. It all speaks to, you know, we were here many, many years ago after, you know, during World War II and after World War II, the Department of Defense built a lot of this infrastructure, whether it be the ports or the airports. And then DOD, you know, we went through the Cold War and everything and people kind of, DOD turned away from these improvements that they made, all this infrastructure that was built. And now DOD is looking at doing some basic, you know, fix-up, make the, make the infrastructure strong to enable future exercises. So about every five years, there's another NEPA environmental impact statement that's done. It's the, in this area, it's called the Marianas Testing and Training EIS. And so everything that we are able to do under our current legal authorizations is captured in the last EIS. If you go through it, you'll see the kinds of training that can be done, the extent to which it can be done, how many times a year, et cetera, et cetera. It covers airspace, sea space, under, undersea, and terrestrial. Our biggest two terrestrial places in the CNMI are FDM and the military lease area in Tinian. Otherwise, it's either airspace, sea space, or, or undersea. It's a very large area. And so the military goes through a very disciplined approach to try and identify what kind of training can we do. There's quite a bit of opportunity under those authorizations, because we completed the environmental process. What is going to happen later this year is that MIT, the MITT, Marianas Islands Training and Testing EIS, is coming up for renewal, right? If the five years is up and they gotta update it, there's an opportunity for DOD to look at what other kinds of training can we do in the region. And, and that process, as you know, NEPA is a public process. So it's the perfect opportunity to get in on the ground at the beginning of the NEPA process when it's being scoped, when we have scoping meetings in the community, to express exactly what, what you did, sir, where you said, you know, it's a, there's two propositions here. More military means some economic, you know, improvement. But on the other hand, we don't want to be one big Air Force base or Navy base because then that overwhelms the tourism field and opportunities. So there's a balance there, expressing that balance. And what your expectations are as a community with regard to the military's presence on your island should be spoken about. It should be shared with those planners that are gonna do the next phase of the MIT, EIS. When that's done, you'll have like a menu of the types of trainings that can be done within the Marianas, including Guam. So Guam and, and CNMI for that particular document and that study. And so you have an opportunity to shape that. So you're here tonight, you're expressing that well ahead of that even kicking off. I would just encourage you to continue. Stay with us. I'll be here for the MIT meeting most likely. Those planners that are doing it, they're gonna want to hear exactly what you're saying. That's the real big picture, that reoccurring every five to seven years where we get under the law, under federal and local law, we, we seek environmental and socioeconomic authorization to do a menu of training throughout the region. And that's the big picture.
We're gonna get, well, before we take one more in the audience, we do have two from Marianas Press. So we're gonna lead to Tom.
There's four now.
It's growing, it's growing. Again, we want to thank our audience that are viewing from the platforms of Marianas Press as well as from ROTA Public Information. Thank you.
I, I do, but we speak about tourism, but and you say you're gonna have 20 to 40 new uniformed people on island for nine months. Also, the nine months, I see that construction phase for each. You, you're saying you're gonna build six warehouses that, an average of 45 days. And of course, you're gonna have infrastructure in your construction, like drainage, lighting, so forth. For the lighting, are you going to be depending on our CUC service? One, that's question one. Two, what's the lifespan of the, the K?
Case span.
Case span. Is it for, uh, 20 years?
That's, that's a great question. I would actually refer to one of my subject matter experts here.
How about everyone? I'm Colonel Peter Ju. So all the 20 to 40 engineers that everyone keeps talking about will be coming from the 356 ECEG. That's the Expeditionary Civil Engineer Group. We are headquartered out of Guam. And so to answer your last question, the case spans last actually quite a while. We have case spans all across the Air Force that have been up for 20 to 40 years. And so they actually do last quite a while. It's pretty robust construction, even though they're built pretty expediently. And then for the power, I'm not 100% sure on the power, if it's gonna get hooked up or if it's gonna be generator powered.
And that's, that's still in design right now.
All right. And so TBD, if that's gonna be, if these are gonna be powered by the utility company or if we're gonna provide our own generators to run, to provide the power. And so while I do have the microphone, I do want to say, I know there's a lot of concerns about what's the military footprint going to be like, what's the direct impact to the community. But right now, the 356 EKG, we have engineers on Tinian, we have engineers on Guam. We also have about 30, 40 out in Japan, as well as 20 that we just sent to Australia. And we have 20 in the Philippines. And they're all doing, all doing great work all across the region. And each one of them are assigned an officer in charge, right, an OIC as we call them. And I always give the OICs a lot of, a lot of lead in terms of how much they want to get involved with the local communities. And that is something that is a high priority for me. We have three lines of efforts in our group. And one of our lines of efforts is to improve partnerships and alliances. And that's where community engagement starts to come into play. And so if you look at the example of Tinian, that, that team over there has been very, 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 very engaged with the community. They, they help with the, the ROTC program at the high school. They've done some community service work like beach cleanups. They've done painting of facilities and things like that. So they are able to, within their authorities, which is very limited for the military, right? There's, there's very, very limited, limited authority that we have to use military labor and funds on the local community, right? There are separate programs for that, actually for that. But to their limits, they are actually for that. But to their limits, they are actually really diving deep into the communities and getting to know folks, the culture, and integrating with the community as best as they can. And so that is my commitment for, for the engineers that do come in here. They're not just going to do their work and then disappear, right? I, my expectation for them is to become part of the community while they're on the island and do as best as they can to, to integrate with the community. So hopefully that answers some of those questions. Thank you.
So you're saying it would improve military tourism here in Rota?
Military tourism in terms of like folks coming here for our honor?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can't answer that because that would primarily come from like the main base in Anderson, right? They have a large military presence on Anderson as well as main base Guam. That, that I cannot control. But I do know during those nine-ish months where we do have engineers, there will be a lot of other folks that will be coming out here for, for various reasons, right? Like commander would like to come out every once in a while. I go to Tinian every month to meet with the mayor of Tinian and potentially, and that, that I usually bring about three to five people with me each time I go to Tinian. And so maybe we could do something similar to that. When we're in construction phase, we could meet with the mayor's office every month to see how everything's going. And that would draw some folks in each time. But we have a lot of support members that are at the headquarters in Guam that come out, like our safety personnel, our safety personnel folks, all those kind of support folks that have to come out here and do site visits on top of the 20 to 40 members that will have actually doing the construction.
And one last question, though. You know, we, we read statement made on the paper about social impact. I for one, hope that the military would exercise more restraint so that we don't, we can avoid incidents like in Okinawa incident, as in the Philippines, of course, where, you know, you bring people here and they're likely, but with well-established and geared toward helping the community rather than making a hell for the island or Rota and the people of Rota.
Of course. That would be one of my top priorities, is to make sure that our members are not disturbing or creating any issues with local community. And sir, I will tell you, every member that comes to the 356 EKG wants to be at the EKG. And we have had members that have done, you know, they have had disciplinary issues. And you know what we do to them? We send them home. And that's like the worst thing that we could do to them. They're deployed to Guam from other locations. And for our community, this is one of the epicenters of engineering activities. And so every engineer wants to be a part of what we're doing out here. And for them to get sent home because they do something wrong is, is a huge, you know, obviously a huge disincentive for them and incentive for them to actually behave and do, do the right thing. So we kind of hold that over them. We said, hey, you are in a golden opportunity out here. You're going to be able to enjoy the island of wherever it may be. Right now, most of our members are still used to deploying to the desert where it's not nearly as nice, where you have beach access and restaurants. And so for them to come out here, enjoy these islands, they don't want to be able, they don't, they don't want to have to be forced to leave. And so that's, that's kind of how we, how we do it. Thank you.
All right. So we're going to move on to our next online question with Mr. McGlone. Tom, please.
Okay. The first question is, how much fuel will be stored? Will it be above ground or underground? What steps will be taken if there is a leak? How will Air Force mitigate the effect of the environment if there is a leak?
There is no fuel storage associated with these projects.
The second question is about biocontainment. The viewer writes, Rota is technically undisturbed sacred grounds, including a latte quarry and a banyard tree that are pilgrimage sites for neighboring islands. What measures will be taken to safeguard these and other sacred grounds?
Not sure I understand the context of the question. Are, well, I can tell you that I, I got a great thrill from visiting those sites on the first day that I was here. And to Colonel Ju's earlier point, the respect for the folks that are coming out here for the environment that we are in is going to be unparalleled. And I'll use this as a quick opportunity because Colonel Ju won't do it. He's got the top professionals in the world in the Air Force Civil Engineering community. And they're here and they want to be here. And it, it's an amazing opportunity for us. I'm in awe of what they've been able to accomplish over the course of the last couple of years. And I'm super excited to be able to get them in the game here at Rota. I want to make sure that I addressed the crux of that question. Can you read that back for me again?
Sure. Rota is technically undisturbed sacred grounds, including a latte quarry and banyard tree that are pilgrimage sites for neighboring islands. What measures will be taken to safeguard these and other sacred grounds?
So I, I would offer that if, if there, there will be no intent at those places other than tourism and a shared opportunity to, to visit.
All right. And the last question online for now, what is the military doing to address and remediate existing problems, including contamination and unexploded ordinance that may be exposed with these activities?
Right. So we've got a process that we follow for all of our project sites across the world. And they're the same process that we do in Alabama, or in Guam, or here at Rota. If we find something, we address it. But we're, we're committed to leaving our project sites much better than what we found.
I'm sorry, could I just quickly follow up? It's my own question.
Yes, please.
Yeah. We've been told that a fuel farm, we've heard the words fuel farm and fuel storage. And you said there's no fuel storage at all. So what has changed between yesterday and today?
Okay, great. So that's the reason why I'm here is to differentiate between what we're trying to accomplish in an expeditious manner with these two projects versus what is programmed and being planned for, I'll say, out here, '27, '28, using military construction. To your point, there is fuel storage at the airport planned for that military construction project. It is not inherent to what it is that we're looking to do here. It is just the warehouses and just the concrete pads for the Masaqu.
Thank you again, sir. I really love the intention of you guys with your plan to, to build a warehouse there or storage giving. My question there, what benefit are you guys to do for our community here in Rota? And the other question is, do you guys have a feasibility study before you guys proceed with those? And lastly, I know that's a big construction. How is the Air Force can help us build our port here in Rota? Because with all those materials that is coming in, it's going to be very limited. Because you cannot bring in more than 240 feet vessel. You can bring 200 feet vessel, but it's limited because of that draft. What can Air Force do to help us to open our port? Not just airport, I mean, I love that, but please help our airport to a seaport. Can you let us know? I mean, what else can Air Force benefit the people of Rota? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I, I'm only tracking the last part of that question. And I can bring that back. We do 10,000 linear feet of concrete, and our friends in the Navy do the ports. So I'm not in a position to be able to answer that, that question for you. But can we revisit the first two questions that you had?
Okay. The first question is, since you guys are doing all those plans, right? I love the intention of you guys building those. My question there is, what benefit will, not just only CPA, we love to see how they date in Tinian. What benefit is for our people here in Rota? And the other question, do you guys have a feasibility study before you guys even build that structure there?
No, I wouldn't say that we have a feasibility study, but we've got a design process where we're engaging with CNMI, three and four letters, the ECQ, that are in our ports authority here in the Commonwealth. I wouldn't say it's a feasibility study as much as I would say it's more of a conceptual design at this point. And based on the conceptual design, we have the conversations like we've got here this evening, soliciting input, working with our partners, and then trying to get it to a point of execution. 100% design.
Sure.
So if, if this project does go forward from a feasibility standpoint, that is when my team will start coming out. Remember I told you, we have a lot of support members. We have contracting officers that will work with local businesses to see what is available. I think we just had the industry day yesterday. And so that's kind of part of seeing what is feasible and possible out here in terms of where's the equipment, where's the material coming from, and all those things. And so that's already kind of happening right now as we do those industry days and we send some folks out to, to kind of see what's out here, right? I think, you know, there will be a lot of opportunities for things like, you know, we'll burn a concrete, and we're going to need aggregate, we're going to need materials, right? And if we can't source it locally, we're going to have to barge it in. And that, I think that's kind of where you're getting at in terms of the port. If there's limitations at the port, we will have to be aware of that and find out how we can, you know, if it mutually supports our activities and getting materials in. That could be some potential for, for the military to help in that regards during the time that we do the construction. But I think, I think Colonel Fontana said it right, you know, the Air Force isn't experts on ports or port operations. That's really the Navy because they're the ones that use the boats. So that's the best answer I could give right now, sir.
Okay, thank you. And one just last question. I'm just, my question more mainly, what benefit can we get for our people here in Rota? I mean, you guys in the process of doing your proposal for lease or something? I mean, what benefit can we get as a resident here in Rota? I mean, if you can say one example in Tinian, there's a benefit for them, the public itself, not just CPA, but for Rota people here. We need, and lastly, just that last comment, since you guys are coming over to Rota, why can't you guys bring your family to enjoy Rota? Well, here in Rota, we have asparagus, we have pizzeria. But the same thing, we don't have the five-star hotel here. But please help our economy.
My, my wife put you onto that, didn't she?
Not just wife, man, just kids. Bring your kids. Thank you.
I apologize. I think we have a follow-up response with the port manager. I think he was raising his hands. We get a mic to the port manager to respond to Mr. Taisikin's question.
So in regards to the question by Rodney about the benefit, so one of the conversations that CPA is having with the Air Force is that once this project is completed, the Air Force is going to be coming here on a quality basis to do trainings. And when they come here, they're not going to put up tents where they're going to stay. They're going, they want to stay in the hotel. That's one benefit. They're going to eat out in the restaurants. They're going to rent cars. They're, all of these benefits is the economic benefit that's going to come to the community. That's the Air Force plan that's been discussed with CPA. So that's the economic benefit that we're going to get as a community because of this project. So and then in regards to the seaport, we are having a feasibility study done right now, but it's not with the Air Force. It's a different group, but with the DOD. So once the feasibility is studied, then they're going to take that study and see where the funding is going to come and how much of the funding is needed for that improvement of the port in, in regards to these questions for the port improvement.
Thank you, sir. And, and thank you, Colonel Ju. I, I missed the intent of that question on the feasibility study, but I think we scratched it. So I appreciate you on the comeback. I would also offer to you, this is what our intent is, and we have two intentions, right? Our intent is to build and to execute these projects. Our also intent is to maximize our economic engagement here and our engagement with the community. So I would ask you to leave this forum informed. If you have questions about what it is that we're doing here, please let me know and get back with me and tell me how we can plug in the most directly, where we can drive the most benefit. That's the engagement that we're very blessed to have this evening, and I appreciate very much. But it's not over here, right? Like this is, this is how we start the conversation. So please get back with us. Let us know how we can plug in. Let us know if we can make a difference based on what we're trying to accomplish. And I think we can all make it out with a very reasonable project outcome and an even better relationship with the community.
Okay. And can we have a next question? Glenn, sir?
Good evening, everyone. I wanted to just to ask on the NEPA process, what is the timeframe that we're looking at for this NEPA process? And then also, can you use other areas like Tinian, all of it it took? And what do you do with the comments?
Yeah. So our NEPA process varies by what our site is. I'm, I'm going to be frank with you right now. Our environmental branch chief has not had the opportunity to yet look at what we're proposing here at this specific site. Based on bandwidth, once we have an agreed upon area with the CPA, it may be an agreement in principle prior to moving forward to a lease agreement, that's when I'll have a little bit more visibility on how long that process is going to take.
So, so in that regard, how far are you into finalizing your proposal? I wanted, wanted to, to echo here is just the understanding on the length of this project before it actually commence, so that the community here understands. Is it six months before you turn in your proposal to CPA? And then after that, another year, two year for the NEPA process?
That is, that is not our intention. So the draft proposal has been provided to the CPA. So it is currently with their review and pending a board vote. What we would like to see is a false start, right? And if it were a false start, that would be our stars aligning, working with our brothers and sisters over at our CNMI, three and four letters, right? That, that's our basis for our project schedule right now.
At least a year? At least two years?
No, the, the fall.
This fall?
Yes, sir.
Including the NEPA process?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Sure.
Good morning, or good evening. Thank you for this opportunity. I, I just wanted to ask about the, the value of the project in comparison to, to the divert airfield. I, I think there is a misconception of the size of this project. It, it almost sounds as if we're building another divert airfield. So I, I just wanted to kind of just get to the size of what are you actually building? And what is the, what is the value in terms of dollars poured into this project?
Okay, great. So Colonel Ju is going to stop me if I speak out of charge. So each of these warehouses represents about 5,000 square feet worth of warehouse spacing. Concrete pads themselves, each set on either side of the runway, we'll call it 15 by 25 foot pads and 15 by 15 foot pads. So we'll have four of each of those out at the airfield. Our material costs on case spans, last I was tracking was about $2 million per case span. A little less?
So it's not $27 million or $30 million project?
No.
Okay. So and then another question is, in terms of the, the CPA's operation, will, and I know we, you explained this to us, but you know, maybe something that our community can't hear is that, will this project affect any of our day-to-day operation? I know you explained that, but I, I just kind of want that to be shared.
Absolutely, right? So, so we're here to work within the constraints of the airfield, right? So we're going to be working in conjunction with Albert and his team to minimize impact to zero.
Okay. So what I'm tracking or what I'm understanding is really that even when this project commits or starts, there's really going to be no impact to our airlines coming in, our, our two small airline vessels coming in, in terms of bringing in our, our tourists or, you know, our, our community. There's going to be no impact on that because the way you guys are going to plan this out is that you're going to try and minimize the impact of that.
Yes, sir.
And then the size of this, this, this construction is really nowhere near, nowhere near the divert airfield. It's, and, and the feasibility of nine months is really doable in terms of the size. Is that correct?
I, I feel, I feel that to be the case, sir. And, and I, I would offer that it might, it might, under some perception, be a humble start. but it is a start, and it's our proof of concept for being able to execute this way, and I'm super excited about it.
And then one last, the return on investment, right? We're talking about these 20 to 40 individuals that are gonna be doing construction. There's gonna be downtime for them, and I'm sure they're gonna be dining in the community, right? And investing their money here and making sure that some of our restaurants and, you know, our hotels, again, are gonna be, you know, I'm sure they're gonna bring their families here to visit, you know, have a dive out here in our waters. So in terms of investment, that's gonna be allowed for these service members to do
Yes.
while they're here doing these constructions.
Yes.
Okay. And then after that, one of the things that we keep talking about is the planning phase. And I'm sure the mayor has been, you know, we just mentioned this in here with the MWR and having this, you know, having this opportunity to start bringing service members from Guam to, you know, yeah, come to Rota for a weekend, you know, for a tour. This project is actually that, you know, that opening of that opportunity for us so that there's, you know, visibility for Rota in terms of trying to create that opportunity in tourism. And I know that the mayor is working heavily and trying to make that happen. So I just wanted to bring that up and see you guys.
Yes, sir. Yeah. And so they, the intention, for example, at Tinian, is for our folks to be not engaged with the local community, be a part of the local community.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just curious, if, example, you are already groundbreaking, you're in between the nine-ish month, you guys are building stuff, you guys are lacking materials or whatnot, you need to purchase some locally. Would the businesses need their done number if you're gonna purchase it since the project is so small? Or could that be bypassed? As far as like making purchases using?
I'm not sure about, yeah, I'm not sure what the threshold is for that.
2,500, but yes. So we've been working really hard with Ms. Charlene Ogo, Mr. Charlene Ogo. She is our SBDC director. And really connecting with all the local businesses to making sure that they are registered with SAMSS.gov so that they can be eligible for federal contracts. So we want to make sure that all our local businesses, even including, you know, our pop-ups, that as long as they have a valid seat on my license, that they can get registered so they can avail of these opportunities.
But it's only those who are registered that are going to be following?
Yes, and so we have, I know she's been working with all the business community alongside the Rota Chamber of Commerce because there are some requirements that they must have, for example, getting physical addresses. And so we've worked that out with our CUC Bank of Guam to really have our businesses avail of that change so that they can be eligible. I know that's one of the biggest hurdle that our businesses on Tinian, and I just want to add that, you know, I've met Admiral Hoffman last year, who shared that with the Tinian community, it took them 10 years to get to where they're at. And through lessons learned, reflections, they were able to create this plan, the military with CBMA, on how to approach with Rota. And I really want to thank Mayor Don, the Tinian leadership, Congresswoman Heinz, Governor, and, you know, working with CBMA, the Joint Region, to really have like a clear conversation on what not to do and really just the best approach so we can have smooth transition and definitely be transparent with our local people.
And I would say the lesson learned there is for us to collectively be proactive, right? And not wait for, hey, how do we figure this out, right? It's, hey, we might have this opportunity. Let's make sure that everybody's ready for it. I noticed the port manager raised his hand for maybe a response.
So in response to the question about the project affecting tourism, so the Benjamin Timononya International Airport is a commercial airport, not a military airport. So commercial airlines take priority over military aircraft. However, we can deviate from that if there's an emergency. We can deviate from our responsibility or our role to the commercial airlines and accommodate military aircraft. But our main priority is commercial airlines, just to clarify that.
Yes, sir. Is there anybody else online?
Uh, yeah, I can ask my question first?
Yeah, please.
Yeah, I know at the first town hall, Mayor Hawke brought up the issue of solid waste management. So what are your plans to handle trash?
Right, so we were talking about that earlier today, and that's something that we've got to give some, we've got to give some really serious thought to. We've got some innovative ways that we're using to deal with our trash at Tinian. Whether or not that's an appropriate use in this environment, we need to take a look at. But we acknowledge that that is a concern, and it's something that we're gonna have to look at. So what we're going to treat that issue similar to is inbound logistics, right? So we're constantly thinking about what do we need to get this project going, right? Well, we need to understand what those outbound logistics look like, right? So said shortly, it's our trash and our waste, right? And those need to be accounted for.
All right, now to a viewer question. How much land total is proposed to be cleared for these projects? I don't know if they've already answered this.
So the space for the warehouses is 4.3 acres is what was proposed to CPA.
At one point in time, you mentioned training that will be conducted on Rota. Is there a possibility to do some road construction training here?
That's a great question. Let me take it back.
Hi, in regard to environmental impacts, I was wondering, sorry.
It's okay.
I was wondering if after you go through the NEPA paperwork and all that, are you only looking at logistics? Are you also looking at if military personnel will be able to lend a hand to the people that we have working on LUTA to ensure that like the aggregate and materials being brought in will be free of invasive species such as the ground tree snake and little fire ant?
That's a great question. So our hope and our intent would be able to source as much of the material from on-island as possible. If that's not the case, then we would have to, of course, follow all of the important biosecurity regulations that are in place. Did I answer the question?
Yeah, I guess I'm wondering if like the strain on if anything does need to be brought in, if the current Rota employees will be kind of, for lack of a better word, burdened with also making sure there's no contaminants or military personnel will also be?
Understood, right. That's a great point. Yes. No, absolutely, right? So we're restraining those systems that are not used to seeing that much in and out of the port. Yeah, that's a great question. Thank you. Any other questions? So let me offer this before I have a seat. We've got folks here in the room that will be, I'd ask that you please reach out to them. Please reach out to me personally. I'd love to take the opportunity to step you through on an individual basis if you have any questions. That's why we're here. I cannot thank you enough for your time and your engagement this evening and for your hospitality while we've been here on the island. Thank you very much.
Hello, my name is Josh M. Roy. I'm a senior master sergeant with the United States Air Force. Many of you know me. If you don't, you will see me on and off-island. I am not hard to find. I'm not hard to reach. So Ms. Charlene Ogo at the Small Business Development Center, she has all my contact information. I'm happy to give that to you to provide any updates of this project or military footprint on LUTA from here until we break ground. So please, we do not want to be a faceless bureaucracy. We are here for you. Your home is beautiful. Thank you for having us, and we want to respect that and the community members here as much as possible.
All right, this just came in about a minute ago from a conversation that was derived from this town hall. Let me go ahead and read it. Okay, here we go. "There seems to be a disconnect between these proposed developments and the real economic benefit for the community. Being eligible for contracts doesn't guarantee actual opportunities and statements about eating at restaurants and staying at hotels don't equate to concrete assurance that the development will support LUTA's residents to lead to a long-term economic empowerment. Can the military clearly state whether economic benefit for LUTA is a defined objective of this project? And what mechanism will be in place to ensure that commitment is upheld?" If you want, I can repeat the question again. Again, it's going to the questions. "Can the military clearly state whether the economic benefit for LUTA is a defined objective of the project? And what mechanisms will be in place to ensure that commitment is upheld?" Hey, this is Colonel Fontaneda again. I like the terminology, defined objective, right? So we're gonna make it a defined objective right now because I say so. So our objective is to accomplish these projects, okay? I wouldn't call it an objective. We are going to use, at every opportunity, we are going to maximize economic engagement here at Rota. And what we need from you as a partner is to let us know how best to do that and to plug in. There is no single facet of what it is that we're going to be doing here that doesn't require support, that doesn't require us looking for opportunities to engage with the local businesses. So when it comes to residences, hoteling, and lodging, please let us know where we can best plug in. When it comes to eateries, and it comes to catering at job sites, please let us know how we can best plug in. We don't want to overwhelm anybody's capability. We don't want to exclude any other opportunity that's available in the economy, i.e. tourism, right? So if we can establish a baseline that we're gonna be able to support through these projects, you got it. That's why we're here, right? So would I call it a core objective? Yeah, but really, it's about those relationships and maximizing economic engagement. All right, this will conclude our public hearing. We hope that today was not only informative but as well as bringing awareness to the projects that are coming to our municipality. Again, we thank everyone that came today and those who joined us online with Rota Public Information and Maryland Press. Again, for the future projects and military public hearings that we have on island, the mayor will do everything in her power to make sure that the information is brought to the public. And then we can have more of these kind of dialogues with the community and members of our online community can come in. So thank you again, and please, so we asked everyone to please, before we leave, let's all don't forget these things underground because it's been a long day, please. We've been forgetful. Last town hall, we found umbrellas and stuff. Please don't leave your stuff behind.